Me later.
Yeah, it's gonna be simple.
Okay.
But it was 6:55 or something like that.
Okay, we're good.
Jamie, we're good. Okay, we're on. Oh, Jamie took it.
Might be in his hands.
No, Jamie took the key.
Yeah, it was locked.
Jamie got it.
Jamie's got it.
It's still locked.
Door's still locked.
Right, because he tried to do it when we were non-public. Okay, so do call the order. Welcome to the Newton Selects meeting, April 6, 2021. Just came out of a non-public session.
So, if I may, the board just came out of a non-public session under RSA 91A32, I believe A, B, and C. And I would move to keep all the minutes confidential until such time that a majority of the board deems that it is no longer appropriate.
I'll second. Second by advening discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Take me stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. The pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. So, the first article is B. Review the impact fees. Is that Mr. Mayberry?
Yes.
Is he coming to join us by Zoom?
He should be on the Zoom.
Do you see him there, Nancy?
No, I don't see him.
He said he would call in at 7:00.
There's at least one on there that could be.
So, C on the agenda, Janet Stevens had it canceled tonight. And if Bruce Mayberry's not there, we're gonna move on to C, a D, EOC update.
He's coming in now.
He's coming in now? Up the side, Chris. You almost got away with it.
Said he would give you an explanation of everything and then take questions if there are any. I thought Planning Board was gonna be on too.
He didn't do the Planning Board yet, correct?
No.
Mr. Mayberry, are you on?
I am. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay.
So, you have the floor, sir.
Okay. I told Nancy I'd try to give you a brief overview of the update report and take any questions that you might have. I know you've got a long agenda ahead of you. So, to begin with, we started the process of the impact fees in Newton back in 1999 when the town had me prepare the original school impact fee assessment. Updates were done in 2005, again in 2013, and then this year. So, updates are recommended periodically, I think in your ordinance as well. Today, the town has collected the present-day equivalent of about $924,000 in school impact fees when you look at the inflated for adjusted for inflation over time. The basics of the impact fee to review is that new residential development is assessed in order to reimburse the town and the school district for the capital costs that are generated by an average enrollment in average new housing units. In Newton, you have, and in the school district, you have adequate facility capacity to absorb quite a bit more new development. And so, your fees operate essentially as a recoupment impact fee. You have facilities that have excess capacity, in other words, that can absorb new development. And with enrollments starting to decline or having declined a bit, there should be adequate capacity for some time to come. So, the statute allows you to spend impact fee money on anticipated expenditures for accommodating new development, but it also allows you to recoup funds after the facilities have been created. And that's what the impact fee has been doing in Newton and in Kingston, actually. So, there are several factors that are in the impact fee formula that are updated here. First, the first measure, the proportionate measure, is how many pupils are there per dwelling unit. That has declined since the original impact fee in the last update. How many square feet of school space is required per pupil capacity? The third is the cost per square foot of school facilities, and that's adjusted to today's cost. There's a reduction for state building aid that might have been applied to the original creation of the facilities. And then finally, a credit allowance, what I call a credit allowance, for debt service costs that a new development would incur for paying part of the debt service, debt service related to pre-existing conditions, things that were needed basically prior to the new development coming onboard. What that results in is an impact fee per dwelling unit, or I've also shown impact fees per square foot. I do this routinely now to show alternatives because communities are sometimes looking for other ways of assessing the fees to respond more to different home sizes. One new thing in this approach is that we've reduced the structure categories to two. Single-family homes versus all other types of housing units. There's a third, actually, accessory dwelling units for which has been a special category in the past. That one I updated because the last time we did the update, accessory dwellings could only be 500 square feet and one bedroom. Now they can have two bedrooms, and I think 800 square feet is allowed. So, that's the reason for that change. Just a couple of observations that I noticed as we were going along. We took a look at the number of housing units, the number of pupils, resident pupils of Newton that are living in housing units that are created after the impact fee was first put in place. And we estimated it's about 30% of the students live in new development since that time. I think sometimes if we see enrollment on the downslide, we assume new development isn't having any impact. But the other way to look at it is that it might be 30% lower in the absence of new construction. I think one of the reasons for that, one thing that happens since 2000, that homes appear to be quite a bit larger than they had been prior to that. Also, a higher percentage have four or more bedrooms. So, that seems to be part of what that's telling us. However, the overall average has gone down on a per-unit basis. The only other thing I'm recommending to most of the towns I work with is you could consider offering waivers for very small housing units that are, say, studio, one-bedroom units, if they're under a certain size, like 500 or 600 square feet. At that level, there's very little chance of an enrollment impact. So, overall, when we look at the fees in the new schedule, they're on page one of the report in a summary table. They've gone up over the long period of time since 1999, an average of about 3% per year overall. And that's considering all of those factors I talked about earlier. The main reason for the increase is that the capital cost has been adjusted up. Outstanding debt service has gone down. So, even with the enrollment decline, the fee itself, the dollar amount of the capital value stays about the same, but the debt service, future debt service has declined as the bond on the high school is being amortized. Last point, I think, is issued that will arise in 2024. The debt service on the high school will be fully amortized. It's been the tradition, I think appropriately, for the school impact fees to be directed toward your capital apportionment of the school district cost, which has tended to offset debt service. And so, the question will come up, how to apply the school fee in the future if there is no debt service on a major facility. So, my feeling is that if there's, recoupment is permitted by the statute, the money can accrue to the general fund. And so, the logical thing to look for would be to apply it to other capital projects. So, I think it would be a little bit of, need a little bit of homework of working with the, maybe the Capital Facilities Committee of the district and the business administrator and the superintendent to come up with what other types of capital projects might be coming up to which the fee could be allocated. So, with that, I can try to take questions. I know I went over it kind of fast, but I have the report in front of me if you want to look at any particular parts of that. It's currently labeled draft, and when you're satisfied that that's final, we'll just, I just only put the draft on there to make sure people know it's not yet an adopted report. If it is adopted, we'll get you a new one with the draft watermark taken off.
Thank you. Does anyone from the board have any questions? Actually, not at this time.
I would kind of ask just a general question. Where do we go from here typically?
The typical, there's several steps. And I think if you look to your impact fee ordinance, it gives you direction on where to go with it. Typical steps are, obviously, the board has done its job in its periodic review of the impact fee and having the study done. And prior to, the ordinance states that prior to any final consideration of the change in the fee, that the Planning Board at least review and comment on the impact fee methodology or the new fee schedule. So, again, it's not necessarily an approval, but a review and consent kind of function. And then before implementing the new impact fee, you would have to hold a public hearing on the fee, have the document available, the new fees, and then vote on whether to adopt the new fee schedule. It's also possible to discount the fee schedule by some uniform percentage. I suppose you could probably leave the fees as they are if you did not want to increase them. They've all been calculated in the past proportionately, but it is good to update them so that preferably, if you did want a lower fee for any reason, one way of doing that might be to take the fee as calculated and discounted by X percent across the board. So, I think there's, that's pretty much the procedure. Your ordinance lays out the steps for doing that.
So, and I know we have the Planning Board chair online there, but it kind of sounds like this needs to be presented with the Planning Board as well in their meeting. And then give some time in there for the residents to go and access it via the website or, you know, hard copies or whatever, and then have the public meeting. I think that's, so the public meeting schedule, you know, far enough down the road that all that.
Are you on the agenda for next week's Planning Board?
Oh, is that for me? No, I'm not.
No, okay.
Mr. Chairman, can I speak? This is Michael Andrews.
Go ahead, Mike.
Okay, I didn't know if I was getting through. It is on our agenda for next Tuesday to review it and vote on it. I didn't, I pulled it off the agenda for the last meeting because of this meeting tonight to hear if there's any clarifications. So, it'll be through us next Tuesday.
Okay.
One question I have, I may throw it in. Deciding whether to do it be a dwelling unit or square footage, how does that, how is that decision made?
If that's for me, I think the, this is Bruce again. In the past, it's always been a per-dwelling-unit fee. I think the town's always been more comfortable with that. We did, I think we did a square-foot alternative the last time around. A feeling that it's simpler to have one average fee. But again, it's there only as an option if you found that you wanted something more flexible that reflects with the size of the unit.
But how is that decided? Do we do it or is it in the town meeting?
This would all be decided, the ordinance is already in place, which empowers the board to select them to adopt an appropriate fee schedule with consent of the Planning Board. So, this does not have to go back to town meeting. It's simply a decision of what fee to assess and adopting the basis of assessment and the actual fee numbers.
And then we're advised on the pros and cons. We talk amongst ourselves and the planning board chime in too. Versus square footage versus flat fee, in a sense, dwelling size?
Sure, I think it's worth, always worth having a discussion as time goes on, only because in a few towns, you know, they're starting to see small housing units developed, accessory dwelling units more common, very small. And so, sometimes it's good to have some flexibility. Although I would also say, if you did a square-foot fee, it's normally good to put a ceiling on the amount too, to a certain square footage, because beyond a certain point, the very large housing units are just not going to produce more, tend not to produce more enrollment, even after, say, after 2,500 square feet or so. So, you don't want the fee to get so disproportionate in terms of being too high.
I think I would propose if we docket the public hearing for that first meeting in June at like 7:00. That should give plenty of time.
Public hearing?
Yeah. That's what I think.
Any more questions, guys?
So, I can't really hear Bruce that well. Did he touch on method A or method B if we were gonna go with the flat rate?
I can't hear you.
Yes, yeah.
So, did he recommend the lower?
Bruce, I don't know if you can speak to that. I don't think you made a recommendation as much as you told us we have the ability to.
Right.
Right. My feeling is, if I had to do a recommendation, I'd almost always take the lower of the two fees. It's just a little bit more cushion, you know, against the challenge. It's not a huge dollar amount. Method A or B or both within the range, typical medians for a lot of the fees I've developed lately for other New Hampshire communities. So, it's not individually high, it's right about in the middle. The higher fee, I believe in B, which is based on, I think that is based on what we used the last time around where we updated the actual construction cost. And I believe the lower fee is based on insured values. That's the basic difference for how much capital value do we ascribe to the, you know, to the schools themselves in terms of a replacement cost.
Okay. Thank you.
So, whatever that is. Yeah, so whatever that is, June.
How long do you want to leave it out for the public to view?
I think from now until June 1st. It is draft, everybody can see that on the watermark, so, you know.
So, we don't need to schedule this yet for the public hearing?
So, I have a question for Bruce. If it's needed, could the board come back to you with any clarification? Should people have questions?
Sure, anytime, anytime. Just an email if questions come up or if you batch questions together. You know, I could probably answer them in a letter of some kind to you. That's easy to do.
Great, thank you.
So, this is a question, I think, for Diane because she's the old pro at this. What, how, how long before we have to get something in the paper? So, if we were shooting for a public hearing in June, whatever that first meeting is, what would be the back date that we'd have to?
So, the first date in June that you would, first Tuesday in June is June 1st. So, you have to give them.
14 days?
14 days notice.
15?
So, if you want, you need to put it in the paper, so let's see.
About the middle of May.
So, you'd have to have a decision, you'd have to put it in the paper for the May 12th.
May 12th.
If you're gonna use the, if you're going to use the Carriage Town News. That'd give you two weeks, that'll give you over to two weeks. So, that means your decision has to be done at your May 4th meeting.
So, could we even just say two weeks from tonight, we'll make the final decision?
Yeah.
That'll give the Planning Board time to.
Review it.
Review it too. And then obviously, the town will still have.
Did the Planning Board get copies of this so they can review it before next week's meeting?
Yep, they got it.
Okay. Okay.
Great.
Thank you, Mr. Mayberry.
Thank you. Thank you. Let me know if there are questions.
Yeah, we have your email on here.
Okay, thanks a lot.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night.
Okay, now we're on to the EOC update, D.
Go quick, Chris. In case they pull you again.
Right, I know.
Oh, wait, before you start.
Yeah, right, right, right. So, I'm not gonna cover the state numbers because you guys can all get that online. I'll cover Newton, active cases by town. We have 18 in, and actually, this is school I'm talking about, school district. Kingston has 18, Newton 21, Fremont 10, and individually active in the schools right now, one at Beggie and two at Memorial, six at the high school. District-wide absentee rate for the staff is 11.1% and for the students is 7.7%. Number of current quarantines as of yesterday for the school is 56. So, now, our legal calls, our CDC calls, the AG calls. So, I've kind of funneled it down or filtered it down to what pertains really to us or what I think residents might want to know. So, questions, some of the questions were, they're working on guidance for large outside gatherings. Clearly, now we're talking about summer again. The reopening task force has been working on this and anticipating what to expect by the summer. Over, during the month of April, the task force will have many meetings to establish updated universal guidelines for outdoor events, including parades. That was one of the questions. Matt and I also, and Larry also, had discussed parades. Another comment was, as you know, many towns have been sending their EMS people to assist with vaccine clinics, and some of the towns still haven't gotten paid. And the question is, you know, any updates, what's going on with this? And Fallon from Homeland Security said that they are processing it. You've just got to be patient, like everything the state does, it's not quick. The new vaccine website, for those of you in TV land, is called Vinnie. When this super site opens on April 10th, there's one happening at Loudon this weekend. There's a specific tab for people to choose what super site you want to go to. The April 10th site hadn't been posted as of the weekend, so if you don't see it, just be patient, it's gonna show up. People can also just start searching the Loudon zip code if you're impatient, and it will show up, and they can select it for their appointment. On another question, people had, that had one dose using the original system, which was VAMS. And of course, VAMS is going away, and now there's Vinnie. Don't you love these acronyms? So, the question was, if you had your first shot with VAMS, and now you want to see what's available for Vinnie for the new locations, was that information all transferred over to Vinnie? And the question is, about your doses has been, what hasn't been is your registration. I'm not quite sure how that can happen. So, they said if you want to go into Vinnie, you will have to register. And then when you do, it will tell you, okay, we see you're gonna have a second shot. Here's where you can go if you don't want to go to that place. And the reason this came up is because when Exeter got closed and Newington opened up, we, Larry and I got oodles of calls because people did not want to go to Newington. And part of the reason was that it was not a mobile site like Exeter was. So, they said for you in TV land, if you want mobile and you're going to Newton, uh, Newton, to Newington, once you get there, signal some of the staff to let them know you don't want to go in, you want to be mobile, and they will take care of you, mobile, so that's good to know. Another question was, people that got their original dose in VAMS now through, and I think it was mostly Moderna, I don't think it was Pfizer, they're getting these text messages, and it's like wellness checks. And after, you probably saw it on the news, they're saying, oh, don't answer those things. Well, if it was Moderna that you got for your first one, and you're getting these daily wellness messages, they are not a scam. It's okay to answer them. And it's simply, it's nothing personal, it's, you know, how do you feel, do you have a headache, how's your arm? Do you have any symptoms? And then it will remind you that you're gonna get another message the next day. And you get them every day about 4:00. So, that is not a scam.
Can you tell them how to stop those?
Yes. So, at the bottom of that text message, it does say, if you don't want to get them, hit stop and send it back, and you won't get those messages anymore. Then there was a question about towns opening. And they said, what's gonna happen when the declaration is over? Is there any guidance to follow when reopening buildings? Some people on the call said, well, we've already opened. And they said, when it comes to the municipal buildings, it is being discussed, and they want to do some new recommended guidelines. However, reminding us, the mask mandate has been extended for an additional three weeks. So, that's still in place. I covered if you want to go to a different place in Vinnie. I covered the messages. Another question was, should towns be asking employees or staff for the vaccination cards to keep them on file? And the AG's office answered and also Primex, I believe, said employees can, I mean employers can ask employees about their vaccination status. And it actually comes on the workplace management safety. If you wanted to ask for a copy of their card, Human Resource could keep it, EMD could keep it. It's still confidential, it's not giving any HIPAA violation. It's just, yes, I got my vaccine. And if you don't get a card, well, then no, they didn't. Questions about town hall meetings. There was one that said, okay, if we have hybrid, meaning both virtual and physical. If the meetings are physical now, so you have some members of the board or committees present in a physical location, but you want some people to still be able to zoom in because people were saying that the attendance was pretty good on Zoom, you can continue doing that. However, once you have a physical location, you don't have to read that script anymore, which you probably already know that, Larry, because we have a physical place that says we are now not operating under the emergency order. Also, if the emergency guidance is pulled and meetings are in person, the question was, can we continue using Zoom for meetings due to having this higher attendance? And the answer is, at this time, permanent remote auction is not moving anywhere. It will still be discussed. So, you can allow people to attend in person and allow people to use some form of technology and allow the public to ask questions and engage in the meeting. There was another question about the summer and camps and lifeguards. Summer lakes are opening at the end of May. Lifeguards don't fit under the current guidance for 2A, where do they go? Also, what about minors that are eligible for vaccine? What is the process? The AG's office says minors must have parents with them, and parents must give consent. Just locally, just so that you know, we've spoken to Scott about our lifeguard, so he knows to get ahold of us if they decide they want a vaccine. We'll put them on a first responder list. Locally, Newton EOC and the Newton EMS will be working tomorrow all day at the high school to give the teachers and staff their second dose of Moderna. Also, Newton EOC will be working at Packer Meadows next Tuesday, which I think is the 13th, to give them their second dose plus some town hall staff that joined us. They also said.
I think it's Wednesday.
Is it Wednesday? Sorry.
So, can I, so you're saying that the Packer Meadow is not April 20th?
You're saying what?
The Packer Meadow schedule, you're saying, is not April 20th?
Is that what I, sorry, it is.
It doesn't 20th.
It's the 20th, yeah, sorry.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep, that's what's on your card, right? The 20th, yes, it's still that, sorry.
Okay.
Long senior moment, everybody. Also, just a reminder, again, this is locally from the R E M D and from me too. If any staff or employee tests positive, we need to know. It's confidential, we don't do anything we're not supposed to do with it, but there is a contact tracing process that we have to follow. So, I'm just putting it out there. Most everybody has been pretty good about contacting us. And then lastly, as town employees complete the process, if you could contact the EOC, Larry and me, or maybe Nancy, if she, as the Human Resource, wants to know the current list, our current updated list of employees that have been vaccinated. Again, the AG and Primax says it's a risk-placed management safety status, and it puts us in a good place to know what's going on. You're not saying everyone has to have. You're not saying everyone has to have it, but at least you know who maybe doesn't have it. Is that my last page? That's my last page.
Anyone have any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
So the next order is discussion on opening of town buildings.
Aren't they already open?
Go ahead, Kate.
I'm just saying, they're already open, just by appointment.
Correct.
So that, so that they can kind of control the environment and feel safe.
Well, to, to be specific, right, you're talking about the town hall because?
That's what I was talking about.
Well, it would be the town hall, the library, the library open full time?
No, I think the, the 15th.
The 15th, they're going to open full time?
By appointment only, but people will be able to go inside.
By appointment only?
Yeah, I believe, I could be wrong, right?
I think you're about right.
Yeah, they are. Talk to Sarah.
Saying, what is it, like, three weeks ago, we were four in Newton, now we're 19? So you, you know what I think. Leave it the way it is for now.
Right, so, no, we're going to leave it, leave it how it is now, but when they lift the order, what's, we, we just need to discuss it, start discussing what we want to do, and don't wait till they lift the order, and then discuss it then.
Let us, Mary, go.
Go ahead, Mary Jo.
Okay, can you hear me? I don't know how loud I am. Speak louder.
You're on mute.
Hello?
MJ, you muted yourself.
Oh, no.
Yeah, how's that?
There you go.
Yeah, hear me now? My only concern is when you decide to open the building, and we are open, we've never closed, that you do this after we all get vaccinated, please? It's bad enough you're going to be having public coming into the building that are not vaccinated. Your workers should at least be vaccinated, and we're not yet. We're getting there, but we're not fully vaccinated yet. And then when you do decide to open the building, how are you going to keep all the traffic that normally congests in that building? Are you going to continue this, you know, social distancing, masks, whatever you're doing? I, I need to know this. But I honestly don't think you should do any of this until we're all vaccinated.
Do we have a timeframe on that? I agree with the vaccination, all that, but is everybody scheduled? Do you know?
My first one is Friday.
And then three weeks after that?
And then three weeks after that. My new employee is not really old enough to be vaccinated yet, so I don't know. And I don't, I don't know if she wants to or not, that's going to be, but I'm just, I'm, I'm selfish, I'm talking about me, okay? Because I've been in that building since day one, I have not left. And I've been very careful keeping myself safe.
So that raises yet a question, you're saying?
Open the building, you make sure we're all vaccinated, and you do it in a very safe way, because if I get sick, we are all in deep trouble, right?
I'm, I'm, I'm good with being vaccinated. And so the second question is, you're saying the other employee doesn't want to get vaccinated?
No, 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 I didn't say that.
She's not eligible yet.
Not your other employee, if we have an employee that doesn't want to get vaccinated.
So.
Where's the liability there?
So here's, here's what I would jump in here, and I'm not a HIPAA expert, but I think the fact that our staff is very small, so it doesn't take long to figure out who we're talking about in a public meeting, so I'm not sure we should continue to have this part of the.
We're not talking about anybody.
We're not talking about anybody.
We just work. We just work.
We just did.
I, because I didn't hear that good. I thought she said other employee, but I apologize. So if an employee in any town building doesn't want to get vaccinated, which is their right, the town will not be liable if they do catch it.
Wait, wait, wait. And I, I'm not saying she does not want to get vaccinated, I'm just saying some employees are too young, they're not old enough yet, so we haven't hit that. I mean, for God's sakes, I'm not getting mine until Friday, and I'm old.
I'd like to say something, can you hear me?
Yes.
So technically speaking, it's good that we're talking about this now, depending on what, I mean, our governor could say, no masks are needed. We, as a town, can decide what we want to do to keep our employees safe. Now, right now, our numbers are going up. This is how I, to me, there is no gain to rush the open. Two, vaccines, as the CDC recommends, you have to continue wearing masks. People who get vaccinated can still get and pass on COVID, definitely, hopefully, in most cases, they get a much milder form. I don't, I mean, I, I think it would be just careless to let, you know, I think the system that is in place now works. Town Hall's open, everyone's protected, no one's complaining that I know that they can't get there, they can get, you know, everything online, we're coming to the future, online stuff is working smoothly, they can get appointments. I haven't heard a single complaint with what's going on now. So we, we're lucky that we can decide for ourselves to, like, now start thinking about, how do we want to keep, you know, everyone safe? How long is this going to last? It may, will last till vaccines, it may last six more months until the numbers are down. We're now in the still going up, so I don't see, I don't see any benefit in rushing this, personally. I hear Mary Jo.
First of all, nobody's rushing it, it's an open discussion, no one's rushing.
Okay, I'm not, I'm trying to say, I'm just talking to, talking out loud my.
Can I ask a question based on what Kate just said? Because I don't think anything's broken, right? We're still open, we've been open the whole time. Diane, you, you have the selectman's email. Are we getting complaint emails about people?
I have the selectmen's, and no, I am not, I haven't received one.
So Mary Jo's kind of on the front line, she has probably 95% of the transactions. Are you getting complaints that people can't do business in the town hall?
I don't get complaints. I get asked, when we're, when are we opening up again? And I tell them we are open, so I, I don't know, and I don't get complaints. If I've gotten one, I've gotten one, but no, I don't get complaints. It's inconvenient with the, making the appointment, but I can deal with that. And if we do, you know, once we do open, I would really like to continue the online, it keeps the crowds out of the building. I think if it can be done online, it should be done online. But I don't have any complaints yet, no, just asking when.
And how does everyone else who's working in the building feel about it? Would they prefer to err on the side of caution, or?
So, this is Diane.
Diane, everyone else who's in the building.
Yeah, definitely would prefer to wait until fully vaccinated. I think that's the smart way to go. Like Kate says, you don't, there's no need to rush, things are working.
And I'd like to add, the other part of that is, we need somebody that's going to monitor the people coming in the door, because there's, you know, if they're not wearing a mask or they have a temperature, we're not going to know that.
I think once they lift, well, we have to find out, once they lift the mask mandate, if they do, we have to find out what control the town has over letting them in. I don't think we're going to have any control.
Because of our small location and the closeness and the low ceilings, I think it's up to the board. You're not going to take a risk if one of us gets sick, this whole town building is shutting down, because we're all going to be in quarantine.
Well, we have to find out what the law is from the state first.
Well, you guys can do that as EOC, right?
Right, but once they lift it, they're, they're in discussions with that, the Attorney General at our last meeting is working on those guidelines.
Yeah.
Because if they lift it, who has the power to say, you can't come in, you can't come in?
Well, the other thing you have to consider too, you've got a building inspector's office, which is through the kitchen, which is a very tight space out there, there's no air circulation in the, in these rooms. And I think on behalf of the town, you'd be probably more prudent to protect your employees and not take a risk of one of us or all of us getting sick.
Well, this is the discussion we're having for when someday you're going to have to open.
Well, we know that, but right now, the numbers are going up, and the hospitals are getting busier, and we don't want to be one of them.
I agree 100%.
Yeah, Larry's got a good point, that we need to find out, you know, I'd asked around, like, can we, if we do it ahead of time, create our own policy within reason?
Right, and then what changes do you need?
Regardless of what the governor says, right? So if the governor says no masks, but the CDC says you're going to get COVID, six feet apart, wear your mask, what are we, as a town, allowed to do in our town building to protect our employees?
Correct.
I don't know, we need to find out.
That's up to the Attorney General's office to decide, so.
Right.
At this meeting, I'd like to discuss, what do you guys need for when we do open, whether it's tomorrow or four months from now?
Well, I don't know how we're going to be able to have people coming in the door, lining up on those footprints that we have, there's only probably.
Well, you know, that's going to go from six feet to three feet.
Yeah, but I mean, you're, you're going to have probably only three people that can stand in there.
Yeah, you're going to give us numbers on when's your high point? What's, what's your, so probably Thursday night? Is it six that you've seen at their highest point?
I've seen as many as 12 in there.
12 in that little corridor?
Little corner.
So obviously, we'd have to post it outside, only two to three inside, as one comes out, one goes in.
Right.
And they're going to have to be adults about it. We don't need a monitor, and if somebody gets out of hand, then we'll deal with it that way, but.
Yeah, but who's we? We're the ones that have to deal with these people, and by time anybody else intervenes, it's going to be.
I'm sure 95% of our town will comply if they see a sign out there that says only three, and you can see through that window at a time, as one comes out, one goes in. I mean, you're going to cross, yeah, you're going to cross, but you cross everywhere.
Quick question, I think Trish is trying to speak anyway, but has, I don't think he has, but has the governor given any indication as to when he's going to lift the emergency?
I think this is, this is his last 21 days.
And what, when are we in?
Last week.
So seven days in, or something like that?
About seven, six or seven.
We're two weeks away, maybe?
Right, but that doesn't say that we all have to lift our requirements, because we're waiting for the Attorney General to.
Right, I know that, but I'm just saying, in terms of, as we sit here tonight, how important is it to make decisions tonight? But, you know, I mean, here's, here's one thing, you've heard me say this a thousand times, fluid situation, right? What the world looks like tonight and what the world looks like two weeks from tonight, totally different. So maybe tonight, we don't have the perspective we need to make these decisions.
But it's just something to think about tonight to move on forward. You have something, Chief?
So I'm, I'm kind of listening to everybody. So yes, we can, the town can be more strict than what the state tells us. And again, this reopening task force is working on recommended guidelines, they're not ready yet, they said the month of April. I had to call today and reading between the lines of what I'm hearing, Larry's right, it was extended, it might get extended another 21 days after that, only because he wants to see what happens when the schools open, after school vacation, and they come back again. So we can be more strict, not less strict. We can obviously continue to wear the masks. A lot of the towns are thinking about the same things you are, and they're saying, put the signs on the door, you know, Mary Jo asked the screening questions, we've got them posted on the door, and if somebody comes in without a mask, just like the little general stores you see, mask required, we can say that if they don't want to wear a mask, ask them to leave, if not, call the cops, they'll come down and remove them. You don't, for the most part, everyone is living in this environment of masks, so it's really not becoming a problem. But again, the state realizes we, we need guidelines, we need recommendations, because we've been living under this umbrella for so long. And because you've got appointments, you kind of know who's in here, so we don't necessarily leave, need that law. A lot of towns have a little desk set up by the door after they see their screening questions, and they sign in, last name and phone number, that's all, nothing else, nothing HIPAA, so that if we ever had, you know, somebody that showed up positive and called Mary Jo, I went and registered my card, and now I'm positive, Mary Jo can let us know, we can see, okay, on that day, who was here in 48 hours prior to them being in here, who was here, if they were in contact with anyone. So we can do that contact tracing. It's really not complicated. I understand it makes you nervous, but we, we talk about it every day on, on the phone for our legal calls, and it's, everybody's working through it.
But are you saying if somebody comes in and tells us they tested positive, we all have to quarantine?
No, 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 I'm saying if somebody was in and they talked to Mary Jo, they registered the card, and then called Mary Jo and said, I just want you to know I tested positive, and I was in there.
Mary Jo goes.
Now Mary Jo knows, okay, that day while this person was in here, she can look and see who else was around the same person. Did I have a line? Did I not have a line? Did Diane come out and go pass them in the hallway?
Right, that's my question.
So, so it's working out pretty easy, nobody's having a problem with it, if we get to that point.
But if that happens, do we have to quarantine now, just in case we come down?
If you were in contact, Mary Jo would have to, if she was in contact with that person, yes, she would have to, and maybe her assistant, so there goes town hall. But that's why we need this contact tracing, so that we would know who was here in town hall. And you know what? Some towns are saying, you know what, we had a case, we shut downtown hall, everyone's working from home. So for 14 days, everyone, or 10 days, Ashley, everybody works from home.
Well, that's my question.
Yeah, and it, hopefully, we don't have to deal with that, but we are prepared to if we have to. We've got guidance in place for it.
Well, like, like, um, you know, I don't mean to dwell on this, Mary Jo's behind the fiberglass.
Yeah.
We're out in the opening, going to the coffee, or going to the bathroom, or whatever, and we're going to be mixing through these people.
Yeah.
But you know what, you're going to have that fear for the next year.
You will.
Right, but again.
And they're really cutting down on that third party.
Once we have our shots, then it won't be so scary, but.
They're really cutting down on that third party, I don't know what you want to call it, if Joe was positive and he walked through this room right now, we're all still good.
Yeah, because you.
You didn't have close contact.
Right.
You didn't talk to him, you weren't close to him, you're not going to, it's something that doesn't sit here in the air and wait for you to walk through it, you know what I'm saying? They try to calm the fears that way.
But we can work seriously, there's so much guidance out there. We can feel better. And, and Mary Jo and Larry and I think Matt already agreed, I mean, once everyone's vaccinated, we're all going to feel a little bit better. In, I mean, our town hall staff is vaccinated, it's going to give us a little, a little more security.
Well, I know we're doing the right thing, and it's been over a year, and none of us have, not good, have gotten sick. I don't want to get sick now.
Can I say, it's Kate again? Just one thing to think about, I know I mentioned this a while ago, looking, maybe we could look into the purchase of these HIPAA system, they're like, HIPAA, they're good for 500 square feet, purchasing maybe one or two HEPAs in the more communal areas, they even have some UV features. I know my dentist has had, I mean, that's where you wouldn't want to go, right before the vaccines, everyone's mouths are open, no mask, and they have these units, I, not huge million-dollar ones in each of the rooms, and no one has gotten COVID at the dentist. So maybe that wouldn't be a bad item to have, given the current climate, to make everyone feel a little safer. Just a thought, maybe to get some estimates on those.
We already did.
Yeah.
Oh, I never saw them.
So this was the first discussion, and we're going to discuss it again at other meetings, so just planting the seed in your heads.
Good idea.
Is everybody good?
I'm good for tonight, yeah.
F, fire rescue station update. Chief Alcarino.
Good evening.
Evening.
Just a little chuckle, I was probably the only town employee twice to be taken out of work. Quarantine, which I disagreed with the whole thing, just so you know.
You're on a good run right now, though.
Yeah, I'm just saying. First of all, I want to thank, I don't see the building inspector on there, up there, I want to thank the Board of Selectmen for allowing the fire department and the building department to run point, finally, on the sprinkler system. Okay, so just a quick update, building, fire, and both our liaisons met with Fire Protection Engineer Murphy from SFC last Thursday, just to get on board, since some of us have been out of the loop, since the start, we're into the loop. Our goal is, between all of us, to get this done right this time, by code, done, okay? I'm not sure if you received the letter dated April 6th from Mr. Murphy, I'm not sure if he sent it to the board, just quick on the board, for the board, he just found a couple of things on the drawings that were submitted, little technicalities, for example, number one, the drawings do not show sprinkler heads where the garage doors are open, but currently there are sprinkler heads. So the engineer that designed the sprinkler system, he's just got to connect the dots and make sure it's right, okay? So he didn't find nothing, I will fall with that, to the Board of Selectmen, if you guys The other thing is, once the board sent it our way, we contacted Car Sprinkler to find out where the fire pump is. His email stated, which went to Mr. Murphy, I believe Mr. Foot, Mr. Melvin, which are the liaisons, they just ordered the fire pump. It's several months away, the fire pump. Okay? So everybody's on the same page. I've talked to the building inspector. Hopefully, he doesn't have to push out the temporary CO. But it's several months away. We're being told that due to COVID, everything's delayed. Okay? But in the meantime, we also contacted the project manager. It's part of our conversation, is the new addition, you could say, the fire pump, needs fire protection. For the board, fire protection is a fire alarm. Fire suppression is the sprinkler system. Okay? So on the fire protection side, the room's gonna need heats, pulls, flow switches, Tampa switches, all of it combined. So we reached out to the security team, which was the original installer of the fire protection system for the current building. We asked for a set of plans, because we've been looking for a set of plans since Thursday. We received an email yesterday with a photocopy, a picture of the set of plans. So the game plan is to take care of the fire protection side, too. The only catch that we found in our meeting is, in the contract, when I sent my letter to the Board of Selectmen requesting a third-party mechanical engineer and a fire protection engineer, we did not realize the fire protection side needs to get done. There is nobody hired to review the plans for the fire protection side. That is number two on Mr. Murphy's thing. He was... They can do it, but the contract that the board has with SFC-
Doesn't include it.
Does not include-
Doesn't include it.
That side of it. I don't know who did it before.
It's not in this one?
Okay. Mr. Murphy, when the board originally hired him to come in, to review building, all the code violations, or questions that the building inspector had, the building inspector never marked down the fire suppression system or the fire protection system. Okay? So my recommendation's gonna be to the board, since you already have an agreement with SFC, to do the sprinkler system. It's all together. You might as well talk to him and get him on board to review the fire protection system also. Okay? There is a cost to the modifications that have to be done to that pump house. I believe it's like $5,000. Okay? I didn't... I do not have the quote with me, but I can forward everything to the Board of Selectmen. Okay? The reason I haven't sent it to you is because there's nobody who has reviewed that half. Okay? There is a question that I brought up in 2018 to the current system, that's in the administrative section, I'm sorry. It needs a little more hawns and strobes. Okay? So there's gonna be a little cost, not dramatic, for the entire fire protection side to be in compliance. Okay? So that's where we stand now. Mr. Murphy also took a look at the exhaust system, and there was a discussion there that that exhaust system was installed, and the liaisons are here, correct me if I'm wrong, under the building and mechanical code. Nothing with NFPA.
Correct.
Okay? So they're gonna put that in writing, that it is building and mechanical, nothing with NFPA, 1500, 9.1.5 asterix. Okay? So that's... I was hoping... He said he was gonna send us the letter for this meeting. He hasn't sent it. Okay? The next step for the meeting, the next step for us, I'm gonna call it a mini-committee, Building, Fire Liaisons, is to work on the fire protection side of it, because the board has to hire somebody to do the fire protection half of this project. I'm sure that's probably the first you guys are hearing of that half. Okay? But not only do you have to do the sprinkler system on this pump house, you gotta add the flow switches, Tampa switches, heat detectors, pull stations, hawns and strobes, et cetera. Okay? My recommendation on that half, which I'll submit to the Board of Selectmen, will be to hire the same contractor who installed the current system that's in the building. You have a contract... You have a contract with them, because they monitored the system. I just turned that in today.
Question, why would we hire the same contractor who didn't do it right the first time?
I can tell you-
Hate to put you on the spot, but...
I can tell you this. The original contractor who installed the fire protection side, the fire alarm system, in the administrative side, submitted, again-
Right, I know.
Submitted a set of plans to downstairs. He put the system in that building, what was submitted downstairs. Okay? No one has any idea where the final test is, where the final inspection is on that system.
Okay.
Because at that point in time, that's when the chaos and the hate and discontent was happening amongst several people. So the contractor, he probably just fell through the cracks, because the project was stopped at that time, I think, for a month, two months. It was he said, we said, they said. So that's where that went flat. Okay? From what I've seen, the most, probably looking at maybe $6,000, $7,000. I'm guessing. Okay? Based on, the big job's gonna be the pump house, the new, and that was between four and five. I personally cannot see a lot of money to add. I think we counted it today, we measured everything out. Four more strobes, and I think three more hawns and strobes in the admin side.
Okay.
Okay? I've said it from the beginning, if the town ever does another project, I would strongly recommend it's done RFP, request or proposal, not an as-built project.
So the... What the contractor you're referring to, though, is not the general contractor, it's the fire protection contractor?
It's the subcontractor.
The sub, yeah.
The general contractor, he just hired individuals.
Yeah.
The individuals dealt individually-
With downstairs.
The downstairs.
Yeah.
They did not deal with a subcontractor. So the subcontractor just... We know what we assume on that half. Okay? So he, after our meeting, which the members know, I personally texted the subcontractor, the GC on the project, and asked him for the plans, what the status was. He wasn't sure, he kicked it back for downstairs. And again, not pointing fingers at nobody, there was so much hate and discontent back It is what it is. Our goal is to forget the past, move forward, get the job done, whatever it takes, finish it, get a signed occupancy, and put this fire protection, fire alarm, and fire sprinkler system, the exhaust system, in the rearview mirror and call it a day, so none of us have to discuss this.
Sounds good.
Again.
So Chief, just one question. Is there, regarding the fire pump, is there an exact date span, or are they just saying we'll get it done?
Several months.
Several months is the end?
Couple to several months. There is... There is nothing. Okay? So for the Board of Selectmen and this side, for myself, building inspector, and the engineer, we have a little time to get all the ducks in a row, and that's our game plan. So when the pump is delivered, the contractors, let's go. This project has taken way too long. And now we have individuals that if something goes south, I'm one of them, building's one of them. Okay? And I can tell you this, it's not gonna go south on my watch, and I guarantee you, it's not gonna go south on the building. Contractors might not wanna deal with me, they might come running to you guys, but it is what it is.
Okay, any more questions for the chief?
Yeah, there is. So the chief was talking about a fire protection engineer, we have to hire one. You recommended SFC engineering. I see on my computer, I have-
Yeah, I was just gonna read it here.
A requisition, so I don't think we should waste any time.
This we have to do.
But here's, and Diane might be about to say this. We also have a requisition for SFC engineering for the fire suppression side.
We didn't get that one yet, though, right? We didn't get that one yet.
We-
No, you have to.
No, so basically, what happened, and let's be clear about this, in order to not hold things up, we polled the board, okay? When you poll the board, that's not a vote.
Correct.
Polling the board is to get a pulse of the board, so when we do have a meeting tonight, we can actually vote on it.
You have to vote officially, hi.
Exactly. And most importantly, and I know Diane was waving at me, you might be saying this, Diane, or maybe Nancy, I want, me personally, I wanna pull this out of the... Where the $300,000 went. I don't wanna take this out of the bond. I want that to be clear. The bond should be saved for non-compliance-related things, in my opinion, so... Is that what you were gonna say, Diane?
I was just gonna say that-
Probably forgot by now.
That is the fire protection engineer contract that you had... You had polled the board and said, yes, that we should do this. So you just need a motion to sign it.
So we need a motion to sign this one for $6,700?
But it's not... Technically, it's not protection, it's suppression. The original, yeah.
And again, that one, I-
This one?
I just thought everything was-
Yeah, yeah.
So my recommendation would be to approve that with the amendment that he also... You also include the fire protection side.
But we can't put a price on that one.
So we need it.
So this one is for Plan B view, the progress inspections, the final acceptance testing, and exhaust system evaluation. That's this requisition. That's what it is. This is the one we're gonna... Do we vote on this, and then approve the other one?
You don't have the other one.
Well, request a quote-
Okay.
For the other one. And then we're gonna prove it at the next meeting.
Hey, did you wanna say something?
Only that I wouldn't wanna be penalized, but you know, they're gonna give you a package deal, one would hope, by doing both, so should we wait for them both to come, the full sum to come back, or can we break it up safely? What do you think?
It's, if I may, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
The prices have increased. My recommendation would be, sign that tonight, authorize the fire chief to contact the fire protection engineer, and have him ASAP, send the exact same scope of work-
Correct.
-for the fire protection system. Review the plans, ensure that it's... Visual inspection with fire and building, sign the affidavit at the end. Done.
Okay, thanks.
So Nancy, the name of that account is the Merrimack Road account? Is that the one I'm talking about?
That's where the rent goes. Are you talking the general government buildings with the $300,000 going into it?
Yeah. So I would move that the board authorizes the chair to sign a requisition for a contract for a fire protection engineer review within the scope of what Larry just read, with SFC engineering, and the amount of $6,700 to come from the general government and buildings account.
Right.
Second.
Second by Katie. Any discussion?
I thought it was the... I thought you wanted it to come from the town building fund.
No, no.
Is that $300,000 in?
Yeah, that's what it is.
It is transferred yet. We're waiting for the board with the letter from DRA and everything else. We're waiting.
Can we say it at this point, and-
But we already have enough.
When it hits there?
We have enough to cover this one, right?
Okay, so second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So, and then I would move, I might as well do a motion to have it in the minutes.
Yeah, might as well.
I would move to authorize the fire chief to discuss with SFC engineering a quote for additional fire protection engineering services.
Can we try to get a discuss... Oh, give me a second on that for discussion.
Second for discussion?
Second for discussion. Can we get the quote from the contractor, too? So we have his, devalue the plans and all that, and then a quote to bring it up to par?
Absolutely. I can...
Okay.
Excuse me, I can email that to the board, but if that's the contractor, the board's gonna hire. If not, we're gonna-
I would leave it up to you and Murphy on who you want.
You'll have a call tomorrow.
Okay. Because that way, instead of coming back two times, you come back once.
You'll have a call tomorrow.
Okay. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks. You probably don't wanna go far.
Okay, Engine 2 repair estimate.
Good evening. Good evening again. As the board is well aware, at the beginning of the year, we send all the trucks out for their certifications for the pump service, and pump certs, and chassis. Engine 1 is down at Greenwood Fire Apparatus, having that done. Engine 2, unfortunately, broke down last week, I believe it was, last Friday, either Thursday or Friday-
Thursday.
-broke down, so we lost both our engines. So we have a loan up. The Cody's is who towed it, Cody's Garage, so you have a quote for $31, $31.88. That quote includes the tow from Ames Ferry Road to Lawrence, includes the air compressor, and includes the air dryer. So the board is aware, and talking to my representative, my liaison, sorry. We did contact E1, because this is the truck that's being traded in, to see what E1 can do. They have no problem if the board is... There was a price that they gave the Board of Selectmen for trade-in on this truck. If the board so chooses not to fix the truck, it fine with that. What would happen is, the town, the board would pay for a tow from Cody's to Newton, so the truck would be stripped. From Newton to North Attleboro, they would repair it, and whatever the difference is the town of Newton would owe them, is they already put upfront, and lower the price of the truck for the trade-in. I can tell you, it's gonna be a lot more expensive to do Plan B than it is for Plan A. Or Plan C, I don't know how the Warren article read, the board can choose to fix it, sell it outright, and give back the Greenwood, what they gave the town for a trade-in price.
I don't think you can do that. It's in the Warren article, the people voted.
So in that case, sees off the table, just different things that my liaison and I worked on, to try to fix it, what to do.
So just to be clear, A and B. So A is we fix the truck, and it looks like in front of me, I've got a quote for $3,000.
$31, $31.
Yeah, $3,000.
$88.
Roughly $3,000, that's A, right?
Correct.
B is, take the loss, and we have the new truck coming anyway, so we'd have-
Big loss.
Yeah, but B is towing.
But what's... Right, and towing.
But I mean, Newton to North Attleboro is what, 50 miles? So that's a big tow. That's a lot of money.
You know, from Lawrence to here
Was 312.
Is $312.
Yeah.
So, oh yeah, towing's gonna be, but any other hard numbers around item B?
No. And the reason for that is
Option B.
Yeah. When I originally sent to the board a selectman, the price for the repair of Cody's was more higher. We did the
I remember that, yeah.
We had a nice talk with Cody's, and they lowered the price substantially. So if the board chooses option B, you know upfront, you have the two toes, whatever Greenwood charges to repair is what the price would be. So it could be four grand. The Greenwood charged to repair the truck could be five grand. Greenwood cannot give you a price until they have the truck there. That's why my recommendation is, the one that's gonna hurt the worst, especially since probably two months, is option A. Is get the truck fixed, get it back in town. Like I said, we have a loan up from another town. Since Friday, it's done two MVAs and a fire alarm. If that truck breaks down, we have to repair somebody else's truck. I personally, I would feel more comfortable having our truck back in service.
That truck's kind of bad luck, it seems to me. Because since we've had the truck, we've had those MVAs.
This, this truck has ever since the Santa Parade. This is the third time for the air system. This is the second
So if we approve this tonight, how fast would they get this done?
They have to send out the compressor because they hated the truck. Because we tried getting a used compressor. They don't make used compressors. They have to send it out, have it rebuilt, send it back. Personally, I'm hoping by next week to get it here. Engine one, that's two to three weeks out before that gets here. The new truck, fingers crossed, might be here and in service the end of the month. Either the end of April, hopefully by the end of May, the latest.
So when engine two comes back, we're gonna be putting it into service, correct?
I would. That was the agreement I made with the, well, it's East Kingston. It's public record. With the East Kingston selectmen, until we had our engine back, we were gonna use their engine.
And how long do you expect that before you get engine one back?
Engine one, minimum, on the high side, four weeks. On the low side, two to three.
So we gotta sweat two weeks, technically.
Minimum.
That our truck don't break down again, so we have to fix it again. All right, so first we're gonna each decide if we want to do A or B on this one. Because this one, you either gotta get it fixed, or you're gonna take the hit. Oh, I just don't get it fixed.
I think A is
Get a motion?
Motion to approve, or motion to, what do we, to approve or sign? Looks like it's
Motion to approve the requisition.
Don't think there's a second.
Approve to sign, how's that?
Motion to approve and sign the Cody's Garage towing estimate for repairs on engine two.
Is it just the chairman that has to sign?
Actually, the chairman doesn't even have to sign. All I need is the board to approve it because it's over at 1,500.
Engine one is
Do I get a second on that?
Second.
Second for discussion?
That's just E1.
Did we put the amount in the motion, Larry? And where's the money coming from?
That was never put.
So you don't have no money in your budget?
Well, I have the money in my budget. We might go over on repairs because the funds, I dropped my repair budget because these trucks are going out. I do have money in the budget. The only recommendation I need to make to the board, and I've made this before, is this is the reason I need the board respectfully asking. The board, I understand there's a $1,500 cap for my, if the money is in a fire department budget, can you guys just authorize me to just sign and get the trucks fixed? Last year, we waited almost two months for a fire truck. Engine one, no disrespect to nobody, we waited two weeks. It's ludicrous. It is totally ludicrous. I've been running budgets since 1999. I think I know what I'm doing. No disrespect to the board. But every time this comes in, or a call comes in to fix a fire truck, I gotta send it to the chairman. The chairman has to wait, either do a phone poll, wait for a selectman meeting. Hopefully, it's not during your vacation.
All right, so let's vote on this one first, and then we'll bring that one up. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Charlie, you wanna make a motion on something on that?
But as far as where the money comes from, I think, I think this has to come out of your budget for now. But we need to talk down the road.
Oh, we're just gonna make a motion to allow him to sign. As long as it comes out of his, I don't know what his budget is.
Can we stop them psychos?
Hey, you guys are all
What's your repair budget?
I believe my repair budget was $40,000 for fiscal 2021. And you guys, Tank Five, just took 11,000 out of that.
Yeah, so long as it falls within his budget.
If it doesn't fall within my budget, then I'll come knocking on your door. But this, we got lucky. We went from Thursday afternoon to Friday afternoon without a fire engine. All we had is the two tanks. We can't, you cannot run. That was Russian roulette. And we got lucky that East Kingston, Kensington stepped up to the plate. Or it would be automatic aid, which works. But you're gonna wait until another fire truck comes.
So I think as far as policy process, that is a more involved discussion, I think. Because, you know, I tend to agree with the chief that if it's in his budget
Well, yeah, if he has 40,000 in there, and he has to come to us for a $3,000 price tag.
Right, but he's not the only department that has vehicles in vehicle repairs, so
Correct. I want to speak for my brother-in-law.
Exactly. So I think it needs to maybe be a discussion for another night when we can have everybody's opinion.
Ask us a lot more to repair.
True, yeah, yeah.
You know, Tahoe or an Explorer. And there's 10 of them sitting there. There's only two fire engines
Right, right.
But I agree with you, Matt. It should be both the fire department heads have the authorization. If it's in our budget, notify our liaison and just sign on the dotted line. Not have to sit and wait.
Because in concept, I agree, because I think it's, I get, no offense, I get these emails from you or from Larry or whatever. And I'm like, oh, hey, like, can we just kind of, like, do the right thing and
And in the same token, just the last note, when we use Greenwood, just like Cody's, when they send that email here, they're kind of expecting a yes, no, not. Well, hang on. It could take a day, it could take a week, it could take a month for an answer. Now the truck is put on the back burner, and everybody else is ahead of it. This is like, say, this is a little different than anything else.
Right.
Thank you.
Do I have a question to call, email Murphy for the morning and get a vote? You did say yes, I'm
Did you say that? Yeah.
Yeah, we said that, yeah.
Diane, I don't see anything with the master plan.
Larry, can I make a correction on that last article, that last motion that Matt made regarding the fund that the money's gonna come out of?
Yeah.
I said general government buildings. It's actually the town buildings fund.
That's what we were trying to get at.
So I approve that amendment.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Okay. So do we have anything on the master plan vision statement?
No, you don't. You haven't written one.
So why is it on the agenda?
Because they haven't written one.
So is it on the agenda to write one?
It's on the agenda for you to think about what you're gonna say. Because remember, you guys
So I'm a glutton for punishment here. I will volunteer to draft this.
I appreciate that.
And run it by everybody, obviously.
Okay.
I've already written one for
Thank you, Selectmen Burrell.
Or read others, I should say.
Okay, so next, review quote edging base paths at Greenie Park. So the quote is from DJ Landscaping?
That's our new landscaper con, yes.
Excuse me?
That's our new landscapers, landscaper. So basically, what happened was the baseball reached out to, baseball softball league reached out to me and asked what it would cost to have the edging on the base paths done. So I reached out to our landscaper. This is the quote I got, and this is a one-time, they do it once. That's the cost for one time doing it. Now, we've never done it before, isn't, so, just so you know.
It was never done before?
No.
And apparently needs it this year?
Hmm, that isn't, I have not been down there. They are asking if they could get it done.
Would we have to get more quotes, or is this one of those you just got?
To be honest, I don't know where you're gonna get the money. So it's never been done?
Yep, yep, yep.
We maintain the park. I would think the baseball would maintain the field.
Yeah, that's why I'm asking.
The taxpayers shouldn't have to be paying for that. They're the ones that are benefiting from using our fields.
Yeah.
I mean, there is, there's an option of seeing if they'd meet us halfway, if the board was into that, but
Is it what?
We didn't budget far.
Meet us halfway.
But you still don't have the money in the budget for this.
Where would the money come from?
Recreation, maybe?
I don't know if you have that money.
We might.
You guys got money, right?
We might.
So the recreation, we, out of what budget? The recreation budget?
They still have that
Yeah, the repairs.
You still have that 25,000 left?
No. That went to the park.
That had to go to
Somebody negotiate with the baseball people?
All right, I guess first, no, go ahead. You've already volunteered tonight.
Oh, you went, yeah. I mean, I can reach out and speak to them. But again, where would the money come from on our end? That's just my worry.
I'll have to figure that out.
Okay.
We didn't budget any.
Okay.
So, I mean, we have to find it.
Yeah, all right.
Yeah. Or we don't do it. That's the other alternative.
Now, to my, as a resident, it's an unneeded expense at this point. You have just spent over 3,000 for a truck that you're getting rid of. Your other expenses that now you have a fire protection system that has to go in.
Yeah, I agree with you. I just
They have played ball on fields like that for how many years, so
So could you just see how much recreation has, and then
The recreation shouldn't be paying for it either. They're the ones that
Baseball's part of recreation.
I'm just
They can go to the base sale.
No, it's baseball that's using it.
So I'm gonna play devil's advocate here for a minute, okay? Please don't jump on me for saying this. But there's a train of thought in this town that we provide, obviously, health and safety, right? We have the fire and police, we provide that. We do a good job with that. And we make people go to the transfer station. We don't even come and pick up the trash. We do all the other stuff, right? We have, you know, registrations and all that stuff you can do here. But after that, can we just do a little bit so the kids can play baseball on a decent field?
I agree 100%.
Just, just a little bit. And I'm not, I'm not saying that I'm, I'm going to, you know, vote yes or no to this. I'm just saying, let's have a little discussion before we say no. Now, the only other question I have is, is it kind of something that has to be done right away, or it's not even worth it, so
It's gonna start soon.
Yeah, so
So why don't we just make the motion, take the vote, and then we'll see how that goes first?
What would the motion be?
No?
I'd like to see a picture of the park. I haven't been there to see if it really needs it.
So
Well, you want me to talk to baseball first, see if
What are you gonna ask of
We can meet 50/50?
The what?
If we can meet halfway.
We've done that before with stuff. We've said to them, you know, hey, you know, if you, if you meet us halfway
I just don't want to wait two more weeks to get
Yeah, because two more weeks, it'd be open.
If you make your motion to say, say that, that if we could agree on splitting this bill, 825 each, will the board go along with it? And with the 825 coming from the recs, what do you have left out of that, that fund that we discovered last year?
We have, we have enough, but moving it would be the tough part. Because the voters moved it for us last year, right?
I don't think there's much left.
Oh, we should have moved it out.
Probably about seven grand, something like that.
We should have moved that this year, too.
Yeah, so
I don't think there's that much.
But I haven't looked at the whole rec budget lately, but we do have a fund in there for repairs and maintenance.
Okay, so you can make that part of your motion, Evan. And if they don't agree, then the motion would fail.
Motion to speak with baseball organization to split the DJ, D&amp;J landscaping contract 50/50 for the edging of the baseball fields, funds to come
Split with the town 50/50 at 825.
Yeah, 825, to, funds to be coming from
The rec.
The recreation department.
You want a second?
Second.
Second for discussion? Any more discussion? So if they do, do not agree, then the motion would fail.
Motion would fail, yeah.
Have to come back to the board.
Yeah.
We all good?
No. What does it look like now? I mean, does anyone have a picture? Does it really need it? I'm not convinced it needs it.
I can go there tomorrow and send you a picture.
Yeah, so I'm not, I don't have enough information to cast a vote right now.
Okay, so let's take a roll call.
But you can still, yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Abstain.
And it's coming from the recreation?
Yes. So four ayes or one abstain?
So Evan, are you contacting them, or do you
Yes, I'll contact baseball.
You have somebody
Yeah, I do have a contact person, yes.
Okay, good.
Okay, number J, policy subcommittee membership.
So just real quick, this is mine, and I'm not volunteering for a job here either. We, for years on this board, have had a policy subcommittee made up of two members of the Board of Selectmen. One member of the Board of Selectmen left us two years ago. And another one left us, well, I guess it would be a year ago, and another one left us this year. So currently, we have no policy subcommittee. So typically, the reason behind a policy subcommittee was, was one, and somebody can tell me if I get this wrong, is to identify policies that are, you know, of risk that we need to update, because we don't want these things to grow cobwebs. And the other was to draft policies when we identify that we need them. So typically, they did not have a clear-cut schedule, like every month or every week or anything like that. It was as-needed basis. So I think this is an area of risk, because currently, we have none. So we have no policy subcommittee.
You're not volunteering, you said?
I'm not volunteering. I'm not the first to volunteer.
Katie, would you like to be on that subcommittee?
Are you on mute?
Think that's probably
Sorry, there we go. Hold on, what is, Mr. John's on mute? Oops. Who is on the committee now, again?
Nobody.
So zero. Because I know we've talked about in public meetings that we need to come up with uniform policies about X. So is this what you're discussing? This is in reference to these sort of things?
Could be, yeah. Yeah, that could be part of the scope.[1670.94] The idea is they draft stuff, and then they bring it back to the full board.
A committee implies it's always more than one person.
Yeah, and it can't be, well, it could be more than two, but as we all know, if it's three members of the board now, it's a meeting, and it has to be minutes and hours.
Would Charlie, Evan like to be on the committee?
Um, I don't, because possibly, we could be talking about policies with the fire department, correct?
Very rare.
Probably rare.
He does his own policies.
Yeah, same thing with the PD.
It's more liability policy.
I'll do it as long as there's no conflict where, in regards to...
Policies on town employees, or...
Now, would that be a conflict since I am a...
Yeah, they didn't do much, didn't do much for him.
Yeah, it would.
Yeah, I don't know.
So, wait, is there a...
It's gonna be, have to be case by case, I guess.
Yeah. I'll do it, I mean, I'll take it on a case-by-case basis, though.
So, it'll be Katie and Evan, that's good?
Yeah, do we have a policy book online, or is it just in the office?
That books, is that online, that policy?
Yeah.
Should be both.
It's online and on our computers.
Yeah.
Okay.
Great, thank you, too.
Thanks.
Thanks.
Yeah, you're welcome.
So, now, gonna review the RFP for Household Hazardous Waste Day. So, you're gonna send this out for what?
It's looked good.
Three bids, two bids?
I'll just send it out to a bunch of different companies that I, that I've done before.
And hopefully, get one bid at least.
So, you've just kind of taken what we did two years ago, and...
Usually, it's the same company, right?
That's what I did.
But a key, a key part of this, too, is availability, so I think...
That's why we're doing it now.
Yeah, exactly, one year we were kind of behind.
It'll be in by April 20th. Okay.
So, the question before the board is, are you okay with it, and should I, should it be sent out?
So, I would move...
It looked good to me.
I would move to release the RFP for Household Hazardous Waste Day as written.
I'll second.
I got a second?
Get ready.
You did, Evan did.
Evan, speak up.
I did.
Any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next thing on agenda is town emails.
All right, can I intercept for one second? There's also a solid waste facility report that Pete did. We have to do it every March, by March 31st. It's in the packet for the board to sign tonight. The chairman, actually, is the only one that has to sign it. I mistakenly held it. It didn't get on the agenda, but it needs to go out, 'cause we're already past the March 31st date. So, I'm just asking the board to allow you to sign it, so we can get the report up to DES.
Is the board okay with me signing it?
Yeah.
I don't have a problem.
I would move to have the director chair to sign the solid waste...
Facility report.
Facility, uh, thank you, um, waste management report.
The annual facility for solid waste.
Yeah, throw the word annual in there.
Second for discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So, the next one was, uh, emails for town employees. Who put that on, Diane? Charlie?
Charlie did.
Okay.
Okay, the, the people on the ZBA are requesting, uh, emails, their own emails, because they don't wanna put the stuff that's going on, but all the court cases that are going on in the 91A's, they don't want that working on their personal emails, and that's what they're doing now. They kind of, the same thing that what Diane and Eds who wanna do, you know, they want you to use their town email, and I don't blame, I don't blame these people. One of them runs a business, and he runs it off his computer at home, and it's a real problem for them, so...
Did you already talk to the Board of Appeals about it?
They have a meeting on Monday to discuss this.
Yeah.
And what is it, I think, what, $5 per email?
Current, the current cost, yes.
Per year?
No, per month.
Per month.
Why is it $5 per month, per email?
Yeah.
Correct.
Why is that so much?
Well, Diane was looking at the security for it, which would be $22 a month per email.
The security for it?
Yeah, to make sure that it's protected and secure.
It was, yeah, it's just another package that adds a multiple, multi-factor authentication level, helps with phishing and spam and all that stuff, but we're not there yet.
So, you know, you know what I'm gonna say next, right? Is, uh, if, if you give it to one of the kids, you gotta give it to all of the kids type thing? Are we, 'cause their concerns are legit, as far as I'm concerned.
Oh, me too.
Speak, speak.
But it's not limited to just one board.
Is the ZBA a judicial board, like the planning board?
I didn't make the last meeting, but I guess it was discussed with the fire department. We do have one member that has requested that the fire department also have emails for the same reason that Mr. Melvin's bringing up. And if both of you, if both of you check your email, I just sent you, forwarded you all the sprinkle stuff. I said I was gonna do it in the morning.
Is that all of the members, or just certain, like...
If you're gonna do one...
You gotta offer to everyone.
You gotta do everybody. With exception of me, I'm already in there.
But not everybody needs an email.
Not everybody needs one.
I sent out two emails to the fire department today, and they got us the training.
Emails us every single day?
So, does every, oh, sorry. Oh, no, go ahead. Diane, does everybody need the $22 security thing?
No, no, no.
No, you're fine. Oh, no, sorry, I'm just trying to look at price-wise. I mean, I just want the public to know the price-wise.
Can I say something? The planning board and the ZBA, they're judicial boards of elected or appointed members. That's a kind of, that's a much more legally tentative thing.
I just think anybody that has town-sensitive information should have an email.
Yes.
It's just, yeah.
I don't think somebody at the, the transfer station attendant needs an email address.
Like I said, it was not me, but one of my officers...
I don't think I need one. If you could get rid of mine, I would help me out.
I can, I can get rid of it.
The, um, 'cause I think I said in the last meeting, we, we kind of have to pulse the, the town and say, you know, starting with ZBA, we just heard from ZBA. We might wanna hear from planning board, kind of just heard from fire.
Planning board has them.
Okay.
Everybody's got one?
Planning board, everybody has a town email.
So, but you know what I'm saying, with all the others, to see what we're looking at here.
Sorry, Kate, go ahead.
Did anyone hear me when I said that the ZBA and the planning board are quasi-judicial boards? They actually are like a court legally. So, they carry more weight, no offense, everyone's job's important, but we're looking at this from a perspective, I'm happy to look at all the areas. I mean, they are definitely not equivalent to a transfer station email. They, it's, they're laws, they can pass laws. So, that is why legally, they particularly need to have due-to-the-right-to-know emails, right, to protect the town.
Yeah, and that's why I'm saying, anybody with...
They're from the transfer station.
Anybody with town-sensitive, town-sensitive information should have an email.
Exactly, so, I'm just saying, that's a big difference.
I think that's a good distinction. My only concern is a 91A request could cover a lot more than just a judicial board.
Yeah, no, you're, that's why town-sensitive.
Think about, it's gonna be very costly if everyone gets one.
Gotcha.
No, it, I'll hold off until it comes out of, from the fire marshal's office. I just received an email from the fire marshal's office. That could delay a couple of things, but for us, it was still good.
We all set with the emails, we're gonna, so will we stand with it?
Before I forget, the lieutenant that asked, I had a talk with Diane, and Diane told me the price, he was informed that the fire department nor the town put any funds in. Far it, we'd have to review it next year, but if the board starts doing other departments, uh...
But, but the Board of Appeals is not a department.
We have another department that's right next door, that I believe every single one of them have emails.
But they have a different, they use a different server. I don't know what they're paying for it.
They have a what?
ZBA, five people?
Yeah.
They have a different server.
Plus alternates.
So, they don't pay for them?
No, I didn't say that. I don't have access to their...
Matt, Matt with two alternates.
Two alternates?
One Trish.
Right now, we're being asked, if we wanna simplify it, we're being asked, Trish, how many emails on the ZBA, do you think?
Uh, six, I believe.
Yeah, but some of them don't have a computer, right?
No, they, well, they all have a computer, whether they use it or not, it's not a story.
Well, that's what I'm saying, you know?
So, six times...
Four, five is 30.
Five, 30 bucks a month, times 12.
I mean, I, I agree, the Board of Appeals definitely should get it because of the right-to-know request.
And that's what I'm saying, is why don't tonight, we just sign off on the Board of Appeals and... Yeah. You know what I mean? 'Cause they're the ones asking right now, so, that's what I think.
All right, so give me a motion.
I don't think you even need a motion, and they, they're still coming back to me. When they're ready, I just will give them, because it's...
Whatever, just get them their emails.
I just, again, I'm gonna reiterate, any town employee that has sensitive information should have emails.
I agree.
I'm just making that point on my...
And I agree, but I don't know...
Because at any time, any town employee, and I get the cost, any town employee at any time could get a right-to-know.
Do these emails go through Amon?
Yes, they go through Amon, but...
Why is it so much?
Let me finish. It's a subscription, as I explained the last time. What we're paying for is a subscription to Office 365 for just email. This is, it gets paid to Microsoft. Amon just helps us set it up and keeps things running.
Is Microsoft the only program out there that will give us emails?
No, you can get other emails, but you won't own them.
We don't care if we own them, we just wanna use them.
If you don't own them, you can't get the information.
Yeah, you can't get the right-to-know. You couldn't, you wouldn't be able to get the right-to-know off the server and get all the...
So, luckily, Evan, can you work on emails and see whatever options are out there?
I mean, have fun.
I think, I think what you're saying, Diane, is like, I have a Yahoo email from my personal account, which is, is the Wild West, quite frankly, with using that. But I also have, for my legal practice, I have my own email that I pay for, which gives me the security and the control.
And that's what I'm saying, so, does like, GoDaddy have security if we bought emails off them, or, I don't know much about that.
Okay, so you're buying emails there, so you're still gonna pay a subscription, or some kind of fee, monthly fee, for that. And I'm, they're not, the only thing that free are personal ones. Any kind of business, you would pay a subscription or some kind of fee for that. That's what I'm just trying to get at. I mean, if you want them to all have it, that's fine, but you gotta realize that it'll come out of the cable-evolving fund, and you're taking out more now, you're taking out a lot more now, and you're not gonna be able to keep this sustained.
You're taking more out than you're getting in.
At this point.
Yeah. And we, we agree that everybody that needs to have an account should have an account, but to, no offense against the fire, but if he's got 23 members, not every member is, I mean, half of them aren't even showing up to work, so why would they need an email?
The chief would need one, right?
He has one.
Oh, you do? Okay, well, that would make sense. We need to, we need to do more research and, and talk about who, who would need it legally, how much it costs, if we can afford it. If, if a firefighter gets a right-to-know requ, let's see, how often do the firefighters use, would need a work email to communicate with who? Because the chief could, if there's right-to-knows, will usually come to the chief.
Right now, there are, since we still have an Xfinity account...
I have to go...
We have, I think, four members.
Can you just pick up the next subject laptop?
Xfinity only gives four emails, four members have it. What, it, it, when I send out an email, I send out a group email that way everybody is informed, like today. Everybody is informed of the trucks, training.
Makes sense.
I can't pick and choose, 'cause I have the block, fire department, you know what I mean? Even that individual that hasn't made it for six months, they still get the same information. What, the way it was presented to me was because of all the requests to know, and all the correspondence that go back and forth, back and forth, they were uncomfortable using their private emails for town business. They felt any town business, the town should be responsible for the emails. It wasn't that they were trying to be mean or anything, with...
Makes sense.
Just like me, I carry two phones, I carry my personal phone and a town phone. Granted, the majority of everybody still uses my personal phone, which are trying to avoid that. That's what they're trying to avoid. With everything going on with the town, it's Mr. Melvin footed, it's easier, here, take this one, this belongs to the town, and have this one. This is the one that does the business, and that's what they're afraid of. Not they, I'm sorry, this, the one individual, that's what his concern was. His concern was the public information going out on private emails. They should have a town email. That's all.
Yeah.
And like I said, my, he was told...
Sounds like a, sounds like a job for the policy subcommittee to come up with a email policy, but I think tonight, with the ZBA being the requester, we should just respond to that request.
So, motion was made with a second, or no motion was made?
Do we make a motion?
Don't need one?
I'll just, uh, motion to approve emails.
The ZBA?
The ZBA.
Second. Second by Charlie, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Nay on me.
Okay, next item on agenda is selectmen's laptops.
So, Charlie sent a request to Amon, asking for new laptops, 'cause he said his was not working. I gave Charlie a different laptop, is it working, Charlie?
Uh, I haven't got that situated at my house yet. I'm changing.
Okay.
So, their quote is what, $6,000 for five? That's over $1,000 bucks apiece?
Now, you're looking at, you have to look at the cost of the, um, the laptop themselves. The other two things are like a care pack extended warranty, and then to the cost to set them up for you. So, my question is, do you really need five laptops? Looking out, I only see two being used.
Mine's good.
Mine's slow, but good.
I don't need one.
Mine's slow, but...
I, I just told that if Charlie had an issue with the laptop, to bring it to you and get him a new one. I didn't ask for a quote for five.
No, I didn't say, I said Charlie asked, and I decided, well, if I'm gonna get one, I should get five quotes, a quote for five.
So...
If you don't need them, I, like I said, until he sets his up, I'm, right now, Charlie's laptop is over there being used as Zoom.
It's working.
But doesn't work in my house.
But not at your house, so it's not the computer at your house that needs to be...
I, I, that's what I've come to a conclusion with Diane.
Yes.
And I'm in the process of changing my system all over in my house.
Evan, you look at these quotes and, is, I mean...
I mean, I thought, see, I thought we needed new computers. I mean, if we don't need new comp, new laptops, then I'm, I'm okay with...
You had an issue with yours?
I mean, it's slow, but it's, we don't use much other than PDFs and Word. I mean, we're not even fancy, so...
Right, and you probably don't use it only for the meetings, and that is the process...
I mean, I can use a $300 computer, laptop from Staples.
So, I mean, if, if the rest of the board's okay with not buying any...
I would suggest not buying any of these right at this particular moment.
Okay.
Okay.
And then, um, you know, if you have an issue with your laptop, and it's only one purchase, you can just, obviously, go ahead and get one, you know that, you know...
Diane, do we, so...
Bring it to the board.
You sent me the last quote, do we own these right now, or these?
Those we own.
We own, okay.
But the, I think probably your train of thought is like, if my iPhone dies, I might as well get one for my wife, to, you know, the family plan.
She gets the old one, you get the new one.
Well, that's what I'd like to do, but it never works that way, but I think that's what you're saying, right?
Yeah, pretty much, I mean, you all have the same, so it's gonna kind of keep you all at the same level, that way they don't get laptop envy.
Yeah, right. And, and the, the, the technology change, yeah.
Okay, number N is a resignation letter, Ann Collier from Transportation Advisory Council. Do you want to read it, bud? Go ahead, I was going to read it, but you can. Dear Selectmen and Planning Board, I wish to resign my appointment to the Transportation Advisory Council of the Rockingham Planning Commission, effective immediately. I appreciate the opportunity you gave to me to serve Newton in this position. However, I find that the emphasis is not relevant to our community, or access to our community, and not a good use for my time and energy. Sincerely, Annie Collier. Okay, so we want to thank Annie for at least attempting to be an advisory council. Should we send her a thank you letter? We can send her a thank you letter. I mean, does she even attend a meeting?
Do you normally accept the resignation to put it to bed?
What?
Do you normally accept the resignation to put it to bed?
Yeah, so I would, I would move to accept the resignation of Annie Collier from the Transportation Advisory Council with our thanks.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And my only other question is, do we need to backfill? No?
No, not really, like Annie said in her letter, it doesn't really pertain to our community.
Oh yeah, nobody was ever on it.
We don't have public transportation.
Right.
True, yeah.
Okay.
I spent, I was out here waiting for the bus for like, two hours.
Did you have something from the Fire Officer's office, you said?
Yeah, but it's not, I thought it was something.
Okay, so under other business on the liaison reports.
Before you go to that, there is one other thing I think you need to discuss, is the treasurer. You have April fourteenth as your deadline. Would you like to set up a meeting for like, that week, April fifteenth maybe, to interview anybody that would like to take that position on?
How many, do we have anybody yet?
Yes, you have two.
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 Could we do it on the fourteenth?
The deadline's on the fourteenth?
Deadline's on the four, yeah, you can do it on the, I just posed the fifteenth, that's all, so whichever day you want.
So the fourteenth would be a...
Wednesday.
Wednesday?
Wednesday, yeah.
Soon or the better. And that's an important job.
Yeah, I mean, and just so everybody knows, and I think Charlie's been through this with the school board, is, it has to be a public interview.
Yeah.
And, because we're essentially trading our vote for the people's vote, and it's only for a year, less than a year.
Right.
So, but we have to do it as a public interview, and then we vote, and that sort of thing. So it's like, meet the candidates night with a vote at the end, essentially.
So is it in the paper till the fourteenth?
No, it should be in this week's paper, it was in Sunday's Tribune.
Yeah.
And then it'll be in the Carriage Town tomorrow.
Tomorrow, yeah.
Tomorrow. Okay, so, so when do we want to do the interviews?
I want to go with Wednesday the fourteenth, it closes technically at five o'clock.
Wednesday, the fourteenth, okay.
Does that work for the rest of the board?
I think so.
What time?
It actually closes at four.
Oh, okay, so it's called that, sorry.
It'd be a four oh one meeting?
Okay.
Six o'clock?
Yeah.
It's good for everybody.
So what time on April fourteenth?
April fourteenth, six PM.
Okay.
That gives us enough time, you're sure?
Okay, so six PM, is it going to, you, you want it public, is what you're saying, so you're going to need an agenda, right?
Yep, yes.
Okay.
We're going to be here, right?
Yeah, but I, I, I would say Zoom should be available.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so you don't mind meeting them via Zoom? They don't have to be here in person?
Yeah, they can meet via Zoom.
I think there's a, at least one candidate who's...
Right, he's in, person is in Florida.
For now.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's fine, yeah.
Okay.
I don't think we can say no anyway.
All right.
Okay, so that's settled for next Wednesday, moving on to the liaison reports. Who put that on?
Who did?
Well, you have, you've...
I was going to ask you that.
I didn't put it on, did I put it on?
No, but it was, you have your liaisons, and when you had previously, prior to COVID, you were, wanted to get back to, to do this.
I took them off.
But we just appointed them last, the last meeting, right? So it's going to give at least a month.
So, can I take advantage of this moment real quick to do recreation?
Sure.
So, and Trish is here, which is good. So, we had the Recreation Commission meeting last night, wanted to get the boards, you know, wanted to inform the board and also get your support for three different things. One is the lifeguards, as Trish was talking about. I think we'd like to move forward with getting the lifeguards, we probably won't get all the same ones back, but, so we'll post with the same post from last year. If we do intend to hire, those will come before the board, just like any hiring would. And where, right now, we'd like to plan, the beach would open for the lifeguards right around Memorial Day-ish, and then we'd do the same thing we did last summer with the, the sign is still up there, Scott says the sign is intact, so that's got all the COVID things. Maybe when that comes down, we'll have a contest to see who can burn it the fastest when COVID's over with, but the sign is still there. If everybody's good with that for lifeguards.
Yeah, yeah, perfect.
For the Memorial Day Parade, I've talked with some folks, I think we should move forward as if we're going to have a full Memorial Day Parade, but with masks and social distancing.
Awesome.
And then Trish will keep us up to date as to what the guidance is from up north, but we can move forward with our plan.
I'm sure there'll be no, probably no restrictions, as long as we walk with masks on and...
Be outside, yeah.
Yeah.
And then when we get to the cemetery, we just have to be careful with the bunching up, but... And then the third one, last one is, so Old Home Day. Those who paying attention, Kingston just announced they're going to have Old Home Days in August. So what we'd like to do is plan as if we're going to have Old Home Day one day in September, and then approach each thing as we go as to what we can do with COVID restrictions. And then, one of those key things is going to be talking to the school, because we use their property, but...
Okay.
So we'll keep you posted on those.
Absolutely. So Trish, do you have anything on your committee? If you didn't have anything ready, it's fine.
Kate, Kate said she's my liaison.
Okay. Hold on, I'm muted. I was just going to actually, because I'm new, have Trish maybe just mention the names of the chair and the positions that were elected on that board? That's okay if she would do it? So I don't have it in front of me?
So, our new chairperson is Alicia, and Vice Chair is Nancy Salumbo, and Kate contributed amazing at our Thursday night meeting, we're reaching out to other people that own property, Mr. Potty's property, she sent us some information on that, on, like a stonehead, it's like a old historic place here in Newton, where I've talked to that gentleman. But Kate did a great job, we, we had a good time, a good meeting, and I think that's about it, right, Kate?
Yes.
Excellent.
It was so fun.
I know, as the planning board, ex officio, things are running good, we got two new members this year. So it's work in progress, we get Dennis Moran and, the other guy's going to kill me now.
Mark Lavoy.
Mark Lavoy?
Yeah.
Mark Lavoy. Mike Andrews is chair, and they nominated Dennis Moran as vice chair, so they look forward to working with the new crew, moving on, and all that good stuff. Charlie?
Barbara White took my spot as well.
Oh, Barbara White, they did her for the year to fill in, because Edvin had resigned.
So she's a regular member now?
She's a regular member until my term.
Correct, I thought it went to the runner-up in the election, but I guess that doesn't work that way. Charlie, Fire Department? Fire Department, I got to be honest with you, the chief covered everything that needed to be covered. Okay. Edvin, Police Department? No need to do it again.
Nothing new with the Police Department.
Nothing new, and Charlie, Transfer Station? Transfer Station, I've talked to Pete in reference to the possible raises, and then I talked to him also about the, getting a bid in for the foam for the tires, so that the tires don't go flat. I know he brought one in today, but it was too late to get it on the agenda. Okay.
I have one more thing for other business.
Oh, sure.
Excuse me, this is a long one to read. Wanted to read this letter we received yesterday from the Department of Revenue Administration to the Newton Board of Selectmen, dear governing body, the Municipal Services Division is required by RSA 21J35 to review all appropriations and revenues to determine whether these appropriations have been voted according to the applicable statutes. The following issues were discovered. Warren Article Four was amended to include the following language. Money to be earmarked for the sprinkler system signs, apparatus bay exhaust system, and for any other safety issues at the new fire station before being used for the town, for other town buildings. Per RSA 3515-5, in all cases, expenditures from a capital reserve fund shall be made only for or in connection with the purposes for which said fund was established or is amended as provided in RSA 3516. Therefore, the amendment is disallowed, since a change of purpose did not occur, and the provisions of the amendment place limitations on the agents to expend from the fund. While the amendment is advisory, is advisory in nature, DRA's disallowance of the amendment does not prevent the selectmen from honoring the vote of the legislative body and utilizing the specific funds for the purposes as noted in the amendment. Please feel free to contact us, I won't give you that. Now, that is also consistent with Town Council's recommendation. Only, only reason I share this now, just to get it out there, is put this in the memory banks, because we kind of dodged a bullet, because I think our priorities are reflected in what we'll probably vote on as a board, but when we have, and I say we, because I voted for this amendment in the deliberative session, is all of our, all of our Warren Articles, even the petitioned Warren Articles, go through a certain amount of vetting before they're presented, to make sure they're going to pass DRA's muster. And we should just keep this in mind the next time people, you know, try to make amendments. If it's a number, it's, it's a number, that's easy, we go from three hundred thousand to zero, we can do that all day long, I think we've all learned that. But this is just a lesson learned that we should keep in mind in the future. But again, I voted for this, I thank everybody in here, not everybody, most everybody voted for it, we had a few against, so, just a knowledge thing, so... That's all I have.
Okay. Manifest. You guys have the list up?
I'm looking for it.
It's other?
Yeah. I don't know.
Start with the first couple?
Charlie will read the first two.
He just announced, yeah. I have it, thanks.
I move to sign the vendor manifest dated April 6, 2021, in the amount of seventy-eight thousand, nine hundred and sixty dollars and thirty-seven cents. Do I have a second?
All second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Sign the cable vendor manifest dated April 6, 2021, in the amount of seven thousand, one hundred and eleven dollars and twenty-eight cents.
All second.
Second by Edvin, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Sign, oh, do you want me to read the next one?
Can I, Charlie, can you read the announcement at the top about the payroll, too?
Oh, okay, announce the board's signed vendor manifest dated March 31, 2021, in the amount of eight hundred and four thousand, six hundred and ninety dollars even, of which seven hundred and sixteen thousand went towards the April Samboon Regional School District payment.
I'll read the next one.
Second by Kate.
It's announcement, you've already done it.
It was announcement, okay.
Signed Police Special Details Vendor Manifest dated April 6, 2021, in the amount of three hundred and forty-five dollars and thirty-four cents.
Second.
Second by Matt, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Signed Payroll Manifest for the pay period, March 14th to the 27th, 2021, with a pay date of April 1st, 2021.
Second.
Second by Matt, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Matt, you want to do the Veterans Tax Credit?
Do the, I would move to sign Veterans Tax Credit for Tax MAP 10-1-4, beginning tax year 2021.
Second.
Second by Edvin, all in favor?
Aye. I would move to sign the appointment for Tony Sizlo, Sizlowitz?
Yep.
Sorry, Tony, to the Office of Deputy Town Clerk Tax Collector for a three-year term, term to expire March 13th, 2024.
Second.
Second by Edvin, any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm going to just keep going, I'll move to sign requisition 2385 for the Fire Department, in the amount of nineteen fifteen twelve for the bronze grave marker plaque. And we are looking for, what was the intention on where that was going to come out of?
Didn't you have discussion with him on the funds? And he left.
I mean, I don't know where he expects it to come, if it doesn't come...
The last time I talked to him, he was going to a Warren article, and you, he said that you said, "Don't bother with the Warren article, we'll find the money." That's the last I heard, and that was a couple of months ago.
Well, I said it was a small amount, it didn't have to be a Warren article, assuming he had it in his budget.
Can we table it?
Okay, so this will be on hold again, then?
Well, somebody's got to figure out where the money comes from, we don't have it.
Okay, I'll put it on hold until we talk to him, I don't know why he left.
Okay, so I'll move to sign requisition 2569 for the Fire Department, in the amount of four, four thousand fifty-seven dollars for a steel extrude and accessory package, funds to come from the Fire Department Budget Line Item 4220303.
Second.
Second by Edvin, any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm going to do the Timber Tax. All right, sign Timber Yield Tax in the amount of one hundred and sixty-two dollars for Tax MAP 6-8-7-2.
We can take all these at once, right?
Well, they're all, there's only one that has money, the other three are zero, but they're independent of each other.
Charlie, you want a second there?
Second.
Second by Charlie, any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, Edvin.
So should I just read all of them?
Yeah, you have to read them all.
Motion to sign Timber Yield Tax in the amount of zero dollars for Tax MAP 14-1-27-3. Sign Timber Yield Tax in the amount of zero dollars for Tax MAP 12-2-22-4. Sign Timber Yield Tax in the amount of zero dollars for Tax MAP 12-2-22-5. And sign intent to cut for Tax MAPs.
That should be separate.
All separate.
Yeah, so I get a second on those three?
Second.
Second by Charlie, any discussion on those three? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And the last one, sign intent to cut for Tax MAPs 5-4-18-2 and 5-4-19-2.
Second.
Second by Matt, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so, Veterans Tax Credit Appointments, none requisitions, we did?
No, we, don't we have one here for the Fire Department?
We just did that one, which one's that?
2496. For, for the exhaust system. How come that wasn't on my thing?
It's not on, I don't have it.
You don't have it?
I don't know where you got that one.
You gave it to me in a packet.
No.
Requisition number 2496, it was dated 3/10/21.
Oh, you know what, that, nope, you shouldn't have had that one, sorry.
I shouldn't have that one?
No. I think we were, we're waiting on the vehicle exhaust system to make sure that the DRA approved on the Warren Articles, and we haven't transferred the money yet, so you can't get the exhaust system yet.
So, do we have any announcements? Do we have any approval minutes?
I would move to approve the Selectmen's non-public and public meeting minutes dated March 16, 2021.
Second.
Second by Edvin, any discussion, all in favor?
Aye. And I would assume we don't have any non-public sessions, we want to unseat.
No, we don't, foot of the time. Ten seating, ceiling. Is that it, does anybody else have anything else?
That's it?
Nope.
Meeting adjourned at 9:08.